I would like to start by welcoming our stakeholders tuning into the meeting today. Today's meeting will include reports from the FASB Chairman, the GASB Chairman, the FAFF Acting President, and the FAFF Treasurer. We will hear reports about the latest activities of the Financial Accounting Standards Advisory Council and the Governmental Accounting Standards Advisory Council. We will also receive a report from the Trustees Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee. Before we get to those reports, I'd like to recognize our new members of the FAFF Board of Trustees and thank them again in advance for the important work they will do during their terms. Bruce Herring, who recently retired from Fidelity Investments Company as President of Strategic Advisors. Bruce is unfortunately unable to be with us today due to a scheduling conflict, but we are very grateful for his willingness to serve. Michael Rawlings, Chief Financial Officer and Managing Director of Finance at the Vanguard Group. Timothy Ryan, U.S. Chairman and Senior Partner at PricewaterhouseCoopers. Lawrence Sava, who served as Executive Vice President and Chief Accounting Officer of Comcast in 2017, and subsequently served as Senior Advisor to the Chief Financial Officer of Comcast until June 2018. And Shondran Thomas, President of Northern Trust Asset Management. We'd like to welcome all of these new trustees and ask that you thank them for joining us. Now I'd like to move on to our regular agenda. The first item of business is to approve the minutes from the Board's November 19 and December 27, 19 meetings. May I have a motion? Second? All in favor? Opposed? And they're approved. Thank you very much. The next item is to hear a report from the Standard Setting Process Committee. I'd like to turn to Chuck Allen and Eloise Foster to present that. Chuck or Eloise?
Good morning. The Standard Setting Process Oversight Committee met yesterday morning, and as they do at each quarterly committee meeting, the GASB and the FASB Chairs reported on the progress that the Boards have made on major agenda projects and recent implementation activities. For example, Russ discussed outreach that the FASB has been conducting to understand implementation issues related to the standard on lease accounting. He also talked about the public roundtable that is planned for April to discuss those implementation issues. And I'm sure many of the topics that Dave and Russ discussed with us yesterday are going to be included in their upcoming report. So I really don't want to preempt all of that remark. However, I did want to mention that Dave informed the committee that the Small Governments Working Group decided at its meeting in early December to pause their work on developing a list of the elements that should be included in the general financial statement. And that pause is going to be held until the GASB exposure draft on the financial reporting model. Also discussed at yesterday's meeting was an evaluation of the post-implementation review process. This is a topic that is going to be raised and discussed with the FASAC and the GASAC at their March meetings. Russ and Dave are also going to be reaching out to other stakeholders to discuss this matter. That concludes my report. I'm going to turn it over to Chuck, and he can talk about PCC matters and trustee orientation aspects.
Thank you, Eloise. So during the meeting, Sue Cosper, Sue's the FASB liaison to PCC, and Russ Golden provided their perspective on the December PCC meeting as well as progress that the PCC and FASB are making on projects related to private company stakeholders. As you probably remember, committee member Diane Rubin attends all of the PCC meetings, at least those that she can attend, and she shared her thoughts about that meeting with the committee. Unfortunately, Diane couldn't be here today, so she gave me a few points that she wanted me to share with all of you. She did observe the close and open sessions of the PCC meeting on December 16th and 17th, as well as a joint PCC and SBAC, which stands for Small Business Advisory Committee Meeting on those days. There were two new PCC members who attended the meetings, and we had a new member orientation that covered the policies, procedures, and operations of the PCC and importance of the decision-making framework. A number of items were discussed, with the key item being proposed Practical Expedient for Private Companies to Measure Grant Date Fair Value of Equity Classified Share-Based Awards. This subject's been discussed by the PCC since 2012, and the PCC members, I understand, were very pleased that the subject had progressed to this point. The FASB endorsed the PCC decision to issue a proposed ASU earlier this month. So again, I think that real progress has been made there. The joint PCC, SBAC, and FASB meeting, I understand, was very crowded. It sounds like it was standing room only. And discussion was led by PCC Chair Candy Wright and SBAC Chair Alicia Posta, who focused on the commonalities and differences between the two groups. So again, I want to take the opportunity to thank Diane for her service as a trustee and the time that she spends with the PCC. Also, as part of our oversight responsibilities, we encourage trustees to observe at least one advisory group or FASB/GASB meeting a year. And in each committee meeting, we discuss the meetings that committee members have attended and take the opportunity in that forum to hear from them. So in addition to Diane sharing her observations, David Lillard provided his observations on the GASB meeting that he attended in November. David, if you don't mind, I'd like for you to make a few brief comments in regards to that.
Thank you, Chairman. On November 20, 21, and 22, GASB meeting was held in Norwalk. I attended the meetings on November 20 and 21, and Trustee Christine Cummings was present for the meetings on the 21st and 22nd. Those meetings were held here at the FAFF offices. All the board members, all seven board members, participated along with David Bean, the Director of Technical and Research. And there was also a discussion at that meeting with the AICPA State and Local Government Expert Panel. It was a significant discussion. The Board during these meetings considered seven different technical items and topics, and had robust discussion on each of them. There were very expert staff papers presented by the staff on each one of them, and staff fully participated in those deliberations. I just want to point out, too, that the Board, over the course of these three days, engaged in 16 hours of deliberation and consideration, a very good set of meetings led by Chairman Dave Vought.
Thank you, David. Susan Carter attended the FASAC meeting. Susan, you want to give us a little?
Thank you, Chuck. Similarly, I attended the FASAC meeting on December 5th, also here in Norwalk. It was a very well-attended and lively meeting. Twenty-eight FASAC members, five observers, all seven FASB members and nine staff members were in attendance. Agenda topics included highlights on current hot topics, interim reporting disclosures, and primarily the impact of technology on current and future financial reporting. On the topic of interim disclosures, questions asked by participants seem to be very useful to the staff as they consider various options for draft language. One focus was on the avoidance of unintended consequences in the language that is used. The technology topic involved a discussion of how technology has impacted financial reporting over the last five years and how it's likely to impact it going forward. Following lunch, the group broke out into subgroups in order breakout sessions to further discuss the topic of technology. This was Andy McMaster's last meeting as Chair, so I had a chance to see Mike Morrow really step up and seemed very ready to assume leadership. So I thought it was a very useful meeting, and I really appreciated the opportunity to be engaged and observe.
Thank you, Susan. I think I still have a few minutes left on our portion of the agenda. And Mary, I know you attended the Financial Reporting Conference. Would you mind just giving people visibility to that conference and two thoughts?
Sure, I'd be happy to. I attended the January 10, 11, 2020 Financial Reporting Issues Conference. As by way of background, for those of you who are not familiar with the conference, the FASB has hosted and organized this conference for approximately 30 years. The conference convenes a mixed group of academics, standard setters, auditors, preparers, analysts, and regulators to discuss at the conceptual level financial reporting issues facing this FASB and the standard-setting projects. Primary purpose of the conference, I think, is for the Board to engage with accounting academics, to learn their perspectives, and encourage research relevant to the Board's activity, and to deepen their academics' understanding of the issues to enhance their teaching and research. This year's conference had 85 participants, included 53 academics, 12 representatives from accounting firms, all seven FASB members, plus six senior technical staff, seven other standard setters from around the world, and regulators, including from the Securities and Exchange Commission. The focus of the discussion was instances in which seemingly similar arrangements or transactions are accounted for differently, whether this is true and if so, why. Specifically, the exact objective was to analyze selected accounting issues that seemed to require anomalous, asymmetrical, or inconsistent accounting. The conference is well-received, has been for many years, and in my view achieves its objective of increasing everyone's understanding of the key issues that the FASB faces, not intended to and does not yield answers to these difficult questions, but it is well-established as a productive and efficient way for the Board to engage with the academic community.
Thank you, Mary. I just want to make a comment and thank all of you for your attendance at these advisory council meetings. I do think it's of high value, not only to us, but to the members of the advisory councils as well, because it's good visibility into the process, helps with the oversight, and also gives us good visibility to the members, those advisory group members that are in attendance. So thank you for doing that, and thank you for your future attendance. I'll turn it back to you.
Thanks. Thank you, Eloise and Chuck. And unless there's any other questions or comments for Eloise and Chuck, I'd like to next turn to the reporter of the FASB Chair, Russ Golden. Russ?
Thank you. The report of the FASB's Chair's fourth quarter report is on Master Page 76 of your advanced materials. The Chair Report talks about some of the significant activities that the FASB engaged in the fourth quarter, talks about final standards that were issued, potential exposure drafts, changes to the agenda, significant technical topics, speeches, and other activities. What I'd like to highlight for you is a significant issuance of deferring effective dates for small public companies as well as private companies, as well as for our completed insurance project. This change in effective date philosophy is very important as it will align smaller reporting companies with that of emerging growth companies, for the first time, give a different effective date for some aspects of public companies in our capital market. We believe it's been widely supported by smaller public companies as well as members of the Security Exchange Commission's staff. It also gives the Board a greater opportunity to monitor implementation and make any cost-effective changes to our standards before being implemented in the smaller reporting community or private companies. We also completed the FASB staff relief, the EXPRL U.S. GAAP taxonomy towards the end of 2019, which will allow for the update of the GAAP taxonomy. Consistent with every year in the fourth quarter, we do a number of speeches consistent with the continuing education cycle in the accounting profession. And I had the opportunity to give my final speech as the FASB Chair to the AICPA, SEC, and PCB Conference, where I talked about the accomplishments the Board have done, as well as some of the more significant things that we'd like to accomplish in the remaining term as Chair. The first is issuance of simplification and transition relief of reference rate reform. I'm happy to say that all the ballots are in, the votes are there, and we will be issuing this in the next couple of weeks. We also talked about how we will continue to simplify the accounting associated liabilities and equity, and the Board has agreed to a simplified approach on accounting for convertible debt, which we hope to finalize before June 30th of 2020. While in the fourth quarter, the Board did not make any agenda decisions, we have agreed to, in the second quarter, to have a broad-based agenda discussion with the Board as to which projects we want to move forward on, and which projects we want to take off of our agenda, and which projects we want to continue to research. We will continue to monitor the implementation activities of the major standards that have been issued since 2014. Those include revenue recognition, leases, hedging, insurance, and credit losses. With respect to leases, we will be having a roundtable in this room in April to talk about some of the issues that public companies had faced in implementing the leases standard to see if there are cost-effective solutions that we can put in place for the private company community. While those are a number of topics that will be discussed, some of the more significant ones are determining the discount rate as well as determining the embedded leases. We also are hopeful that we will make a decision on how to move forward on accounting for goodwill, whether the Board will re-institute the amortization of goodwill, and what is the timing. And I'm happy to report that beginning next week, Rich Jones will become a full-time member of the FASB, and will have the privilege of participating in all Board discussions. And that was one of the reasons why we wanted to defer any discussions of future agenda until Rich has a full opportunity to participate as a full member in discussions. That concludes my prepared remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions that trustees have.
Thank you very much, Russ. Are there any questions? Mary?
So, Russ, yesterday in the Oversight Committee meeting, we heard how the FASB and the GASB staff works together to consider issues that are facing both Boards at the same time. It was very interesting and appreciate that effort. Have you considered explaining in the basis for conclusions to the FASB standards this effort and the reasons for key differences in decisions between the Boards? It seems that it would add transparency to the effort that you're going through to do this in the first place, as well as educating stakeholders as to why these differences exist.
We have an opportunity to leverage resources of the GSB, and we did that on the government grants project. And so as that project moves forward, we'll be talking about what we've come up to in relation to what the GASB has come up to. We also have had the opportunity throughout my time as the Board Chair to leverage the research done by other standard setters, both the ISB, the Accounting Standards Board of Japan, and other countries. And I think we can do a better job of explaining how we have considered the research of other standard setters, not only the GSB, but other international standard setters, and how that is helping the Board arrive at the best possible high-quality solution to improving financial reporting issues.
Yes, Chuck?
Russ, you heard me talk about the comments from Diane about the PCC and the share-based value discussion that you had. Have you got any feedback back from members of that group or have visibility as to where that's sort of moving forward?
I do, but I would like to turn over Sue Cosper. Sue is the PCC liaison, and she has been involved in the discussions as well as the future agenda topics related to the PCC. But I recognize they are pleased with the Board's endorsement process, but Sue has more details about yesterday's call.
Yes, so the PCC is happy that the Board has decided to endorse their Practical Expedient, and certainly, I think, will use the opportunity in the comment letter period to get feedback, particularly as to whether the costs, you know, whether there is a true reduction in cost with respect to this Practical Expedient. They are also interested in discussing at the next Private Company Council meeting some additional agenda items that they're thinking about pursuing, which is guidance around the profits interest method in terms of which is more common in the private company community than share-based payment. So those are things we'll be discussing at the April meeting.
Other questions? Russ, I just wondered if you could talk a little bit more about your plans for transitioning your responsibilities to Rich as he comes onboard?
Sure. Consistent with every time we transition a new member of the Board, I will ask the staff to give an in-depth briefing of the history of each project that is on the Board's agenda. The staff will meet with the Board member and talk about why we started the project, where we are at this point, what we have learned throughout the project, in anticipation allowing the Board member to be ready to vote on July 1st. With respect to the FASB Chair and the additional responsibilities of the FASB Chair, Rich and I have planned a transition so that he can be introduced to our international stakeholders as well as our domestic stakeholders, and we look forward to doing that throughout the remainder of my term. And then we're also walking through the staffing, the work chart, as well as our process and our goals for 2020.
Thank you very much. Other questions for Russ? Thank you very much, Russ. I noticed Sue Carter earlier mentioned. Mike Morrow is the new Chair of the FASAC, replacing Andy McMaster. We welcome you, Mike, and would ask you if you'd proceed with your report.
Thank you. My report can be found on Master Page 90 in your materials. As Sue noted, Andy McMaster's term ended in December. I just wanted to acknowledge the tremendous assistance he gave me during the transition into this role, and I very much appreciate that. I'll start with talking about our December meeting. We focused on two topics during that meeting, as Sue noted. The first related to the conceptual framework, specifically interim disclosures. We provided feedback, in particular around potential changes to add a principle to interim reporting requirements that note disclosures be updated in interim periods for significant events that may have a material impact. And we also had discussions about whether removing or adding interim disclosure requirements would result in improved financial reporting. Many supported the notion that including certain aspects of the prior SEC language that addressed the issue would be helpful, and also suggested clarification as it related to whether interim disclosures could be omitted if there were no significant changes or an item is not material, and discussed the interaction between interim reporting requirements and other topics within GAAP. As you know, much of interim reporting is embedded in other specific guidance, and trying to harmonize that as going forward would perceive to be helpful. The financial statement users talked about the balance between highlighting what has changed and having consistent disclosure. I'd say the report there was mixed in terms of what users preferred. The second topic, as Sue noted, was the technology discussion, which of course is always interesting given the world we live in. So we had a broad discussion about that. Members discussed their views about how technology has changed or will change their preparation of financial statements, as well as the use of financial statements by investors. And we certainly agreed that that cost should be considered by FASB as they consider expected cost and benefits of ongoing standards and future standards. Overall, FASAC members noted that companies are in various stages of technology improvements, but practitioners and financial statement users in particular have made significant investments to this point. Preparers had an interesting perspective in the sense that they noted that technology investments that generate revenue, that support business decisions, tend to get more priority than those related purely to financial reporting. And therefore, the challenges associated with accumulating data related to potential new standards are sometimes greater than you might expect because the information isn't as readily available as one might think. Practitioners, especially the big four firms, and the users as well, have heavily invested in technology to either support their practices or to accumulate data from registrants. And, you know, I think those costs have been viewed to be helpful, but not to be lost in the consideration of costs that exist when things change. Investors and other financial statements users talked about the needs they have for the information and the ability to use technology to get that data in different ways. There was discussion of a virtual data room to accumulate data that might otherwise already be public, not only financial statements, but loan information and whatnot. While that has some appeal, there was also discussion of does that move us more towards the infamous ongoing continuous reporting that has its own challenges, as we know. But there's healthy discussion about that. And we'll continue to discuss in the future the technology area. It's an interesting area, obviously. We're balancing how much is it really impacting the financial reporting and financial statements versus other impacts, things like big data are having throughout companies, but certainly something we will continue to stay in touch with. We have an upcoming meeting on March 9th. I'll include orientation for our newly-appointed FASAC members. Have our annual administrative session for all members, which includes a self-review of our operations and effectiveness. The meeting the next day, the two principal topics are going to be complexity and financial reporting, discussion of an overall definition, as well as some potential case studies to highlight what complexity means. And I think that's one of those topics that means different things to different people, so I think that'll be a particularly interesting conversation. And we're also going to discuss accounting for goodwill. I've had a chance to meet individually with each of the Board members to discuss FASAC operations in general and future topics. We've put together a forward agenda that was in your materials. Welcome your input on these or any other topics that you think you would like us to consider in the future, and I'd be happy to take any questions.
Thanks very much, Mike. Questions for Mike? Mary, yes?
I was just wondering, as part of this review you're talking about before the March FASAC meeting, do you have a good feedback loop with the Board so to see how they take into account the discussions that are had at the FASAC meeting and so the FASAC gets circled back?
Yes, I would say, yes. My initial discussions with them, certainly, I was trying to build that individual relationship that Andy had for all those years, but I think there's a process where we constantly try to make sure that we're giving them the input that would be helpful to them, and I plan to continue to do that.
Other questions? Thank you so much, Mike. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you. Appreciate the opportunity.
Our next report is from the GASB Chair, Dave Vought.
Thank you. You'll find my report beginning on Page 95 of your packet, and I'll just highlight a few items for you. We did issue one document for public comment. It was an exposure draft on implementation guidance, our annual update to the Q and As that we provide to our stakeholders to help them implement our standards. As far as changes to the standard-setting agenda, we added two practice issues at our December meeting, one on compensated absences, which reexamines Statement 16, and one on prior period adjustments that reexamines Statement 62. As far as significant technical decisions, we continue to make good progress on the financial reporting model. Keep in mind, this is one of those where we found the reporting model was working well overall, but there were some targeted improvements, and the targeted improvement that we're working the hardest on relates to the measurement focus and basis of accounting for governmental fund financial statements. And the other project that we're working on heavily is the revenue and expense recognition, taking a look at providing guidance that we feel is lacking in our current standards. A very comprehensive project also there. But also mentioned on Page 97, international activities. We continue to work with International Public Sector Accounting Standards Board. They have a revenue and non-exchange expense project, and that really coincides with our revenue and expense projects, so we're sharing information and observing what they're doing also. As far as pre-agenda research, no pre-agenda research activities were added at our December meeting. And I would just conclude that on Page 99, you'll see that one of the webcasts that we were able to conduct was conducted in conjunction with the FASB, and it was on a not-for-profit and governmental accounting, which are generally taught together, and we were able to do that together. With that, I'll turn it over to any questions there might be.
Thanks, Dave. Questions? Yes, David?
Mr. Chairman, could you comment on the status of implementation of the leases standard and how preparers are coming along in implementing that standard, and also on your evaluation of how the staff is doing in terms of supporting that implementation?
Good question. Definitely, we issued an implementation guide that had almost 80 questions and answers back in 2019, so it's providing a lot of good guidance. As always, whenever we're developing those Q and As, the sooner someone starts implementing and starts raising the questions, the easier it is to address those. But definitely, people are in the process, and we're seeing an uptick in the technical inquiries that we receive each month related to the leases standards. So definitely, people are being prepared and getting started.
Other questions for Dave?
Dave, you mentioned in your report the podcasts that you and Dave Bean have done, and I was wondering if you could tell us what you told the audiences about the financial reporting project and what the timetable is for that project?
Definitely, if you keep in mind that my term ends on June 30th, 2020, along with Dr. Grantoff, also will be termed out at June 30th, 2020. So the big goal is to get an exposure draft issued on the financial reporting model by June 30th, and we're on target to get there.
Chris?
And Dave, can you comment on your transition to Joel?
Yes, definitely. Joel and I have had several conversations. We've had some telephone interviews with some of our major stakeholder groups already. Joel and I are targeting to visit probably 30 to 40 different of our stakeholder groups once Joel joins us on April 13th. Those meetings are already being scheduled with the help of Sheri from our Washington, D.C. office, and we're excited to get things started. Joel will also join us and get an update, very similar to what Russ talked about, as far as every project, what the purpose is behind it, where we're at, what the decisions are, and what the timetables are from our staff.
Other questions for Dave? Eloise?
Could you just take a couple of minutes and tell us what's going on with the tribal government account group and tell us what's being done?
Yes. We've been doing a lot of stakeholder outreach to the user group to see what the user group perspective are. We just wrapped up some of those interviews in January, and the staff are working on a paper, and our next meeting for the tribal government working group will be April 24th.
Additional questions for Dave? Thank you so much, Dave. We'll now turn to Robert Scott, the Chair of the GASAC Committee. Robert?
Thank you, Madam Chair. My report can be found on Master Page 107 of your materials. In the fourth quarter, the GASAC held its final meeting on October 14th and 15th here in Norwalk. And besides the council members, variety of staff, and all the GASB members, we were fortunate to have trustee Foster join us as well. We appreciate her participation. As is the case at all of our meetings, we had a wide variety of topics that... As is the case at all of our meetings, we had a wide variety of topics that we were providing feedback to the board and the staff on, the first of which, given the major nature of it, is the financial reporting model, where we were able to provide feedback about the measurement focus for governmental funds, as well as the alternative view that had been included in the preliminary views about government-wide statement of cash flows, which the chairman noted in his report where the board has decided to go in that regard. We also, in advance of the recently issued exposure draft on a proposed conceptual statement about disclosure, the council had the opportunity to discuss and provide feedback on the four types of information that notes to financial statements provide, but also discussed and provided feedback on the board's tentative decisions about types of information that's not appropriate for note disclosure, as well as the characteristics of essentiality as they relate to notes. We had the opportunity to provide final feedback on two agenda topics that were at the exposure draft stage, public-private partnerships and availability payment arrangements, as well as subscription-based information technology arrangements prior to the board considering issuance of a final standard later this year. So, kind of our last shot at any information that the council could provide. And given the importance of the revenue expense recognition project, that also obviously is on every agenda, so we had continued dialogue as the board and the staff continued to work on that project. We also provided commentary related to potential agenda activities. As the Chair indicated, the two in particular that the council provided feedback on were accounting for compensated absences, as well as possible reexamination of Statement 62 related to prior period adjustments, accounting changes, and error corrections. And so, I'm sure we'll be talking about those in more detail in coming months. And then, as part of David Bean's report, we did discuss the implementation guide update project and the exposure draft that the board had issued related to Internal Revenue Code Section 457 deferred compensation plans. And we actually had quite a lively conversation among the council members regarding the potential inclusion of those such plans, whether they met the definition of a pension plan or not as fiduciary component units. And the board is currently redeliberating the exposure draft on the deferred compensation plans. I trust that that's somewhat in response to having the feedback from the council, a direct input, which we appreciate that recognition. And then, as we do at every GASSAC meeting, we had the opportunity for council members to apprise the board and staff of potential emerging issues that may require their attention. There were no specific new projects that were identified by council members. It was more of a discussion on LIBOR and the impact of technology on the accounting profession. We did also receive an update from the FAF public affairs staff, including various stakeholder outreach initiatives that they're assisting with, and we are planning to do an educational video regarding the GASSAC and its purpose for publication to stakeholders so they understand the importance of the Advisory Council role in the standard-setting process. Finally, our next meeting will be of the GASSAC will be held on March 23rd and 24th here in Norwalk. Our annual orientation meeting, our orientation will be held for new members that the trustees have been, have appointed, both last fall, as well as those that I believe you approved the appointments earlier this week, and we appreciate your doing so. We also will be providing our annual feedback to the board about project prioritization and items that may be added as pre-agenda research or potentially to the technical agenda. That concludes my report and be happy to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Robert. Questions for Robert? Yes, I'm joined.
Just one quick question on the public-private partnerships, which is of particular interest. Was there any predominant theme that came back from the feedback on that discussion?
Not really. At this point in that project phase, we, the GASSAC had talked about this project on at least three occasions, and I think there, this was just minor, it was more confirming that nothing stood out from the standpoint of the council members that the board was going off in a direction that we hadn't, that we weren't already aware of.
Other questions for Robert? Thank you, Robert. Our next report is from John Ockencloche, the Acting President of the FAF.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I wanted to give a brief update on the foundation's content vision and enablement project, which we call our CVE project. As we previously reported, the goals of this ongoing project are to finalize the FAF's future content strategy, to design and implement a new digital publishing system, and to refine the technology and business processes supporting our content production. The implementation phase of this project commenced in September of last year. Since that time, we have experienced a brief pause in a project due to some unforeseen issues, but we are currently in the process of resolving those, and we expect to be recommencing the project immediately and are expecting that the project will continue into 2021. I also wanted to mention that on February 6th, the SEC issued an order finding that the FASB's annual 2020 accounting support fee is consistent with Section 109 of the Sarbanes-Oxley Act. We appreciated that this order was issued, I think, earlier than perhaps it ever has been before. The order concludes the SEC's review of the FASB's 2020 accounting support fee, and we will work with the PCAOB in order to begin the process of collecting our fees. In addition, we're going to work with FINRA to begin the process of collecting the accounting support fees for the GASB. As we previously reported with respect to our accounting support fees, the portions of total budgeted expenses that constitute recoverable expenses for purposes of calculating these fees was, after voluntary contribution from the FAF, approximately $31.4 million for the FASB and $10.0 million for the GASB. Because of the FAF's voluntary contribution, our stakeholders do not pay 100% of recoverable expenses. There's an explanation on our website depicting the factors that affect our reserve fund. That, Madam Chair, that's my report.
Thank you, John. Are there any questions for John? If not, then I'd like to turn to the final report of today, which is from Chris Cumming, the FAF Treasurer. Chris?
Yes, thank you. I'm very happy to report that our full-year results have created a net assets increasing for the foundation by 3.3 million. That is, in contrast to the budget, which had anticipated a decrease in our asset, and so it's a $8 million swing, lest we get too excited about that. A good chunk of that comes from operating expenses. There are $5.6 million variance, $4.5 million of which is a reflection of the changes to the CVE project that John described. Roughly half of it is a classification of some previous expense, which is now capital, and the other half is deferred spending. So, this is money that will eventually show up as expense, but for the moment, it is accruing to higher net assets. In addition, the, there is some reduction in salary expense in that we have a number of seven positions that are opened, six of which will be filled in the future here. And lastly, we had, of course, a good year for our investments of almost $2 million. So, together, that puts us in this very favorable position this year, and more to come in the coming year. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. Any questions for Chris? Well, if not, this is the end of the public session of today's FAF Board of Trustees meeting, and I want to take the opportunity to thank everyone again who tuned in to our meeting today. I'd also like to remind everyone that the next Board of Trustees meeting will be held on Wednesday, May 13th in Washington, D.C. Again, thank you, and have a good day.